Mr. Counselor?
Yeah.
Whenever I decide to get it right, I'm gonna go over my face with force. I'm gonna go over another luxury vinyl. Because remember the doors are high? But I want one to the voice back where you feel.
Executive session.
Pardon me?
I said I thought it was a minute.
Oh.
I haven't driven through the park to see yet, but I've been up and down thirty-six three or four times, and it looks like the pickleball courts are being worn out already. I mean, just every time I've driven by, there's been a group down there.
They only spent most of Saturday and Sunday there.
I imagine.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Seven o'clock. Seven o'clock. If you'd all rise, remove your hats, and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. All our council meeting to order. First things first, we have approval of the minutes. We had an executive session on April sixteenth and the council meetings of May seventh. What's the pleasure of the council on these? We're approving minutes here.
We're approving.
Got a motion to approve both sets. Do I have a second? And I have a second from Tom. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed. Great. Speaking of executive sessions, earlier today, the council met in an executive session to discuss some current litigation and discuss any actions that the town would like to take. Council members, I'm open to hear any discussions and debates about our executive session.
I just ask that the word perceived be added to the statement as we discussed in the meeting.
Okay, so. All right. Per discussion of pending litigation and a conference call with our attorney, we discussed a statement for this litigation, and Marcia asked that we make one slight change to the statement and add in the word perceived. I believe we all know where that fits in with the statement. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Having said that, and do we all agree that that word may be added in that particular location?
Agreed.
Okay. Is there any action that we want to take on this particular statement?
Say we carry on and have him do it as he needs to do it and pass it on? Make a motion that we direct the attorney to proceed with forwarding the statement with that one word added.
Right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Tom. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Got that business taken care of. Mr. Akins, would you forward that on to our attorney?
Will.
All right. Let's start off with the public meeting. We have a request from Hendrix Regional Health to use the town's portable toilets. Matt Browning. Matt, you are a brave man to come here asking for our toilets.
It is a highlight of my day. Yes, thank you.
I gotta say, it's one for my resume.
To know that this is me videoed just makes it even better for me. Thank you. Anyway, good evening, council. My name is Matt Browning, represent Hendrix Regional Health, part of our administrative team. I provided you guys a letter, kind of detailing a little bit more about what we're talking about, but just for purpose of public reporting. The hospital right now is in the process of consolidating five separate electronic health record systems down into one system. That system's called Epic. It's something that's been used nationwide. It's kind of considered a catalog system, and it's going to do a lot to improve patient safety, convenience, and certainly make us a more efficient organization. The challenge with that is, is that we're gonna have to put nearly 2,000 people through up to almost eighty-five to one-hundred-and-twenty hours of training on this system. Depending on what role you have in the hospital, it depends on how much training you're gonna have to take. So we've gotten a little creative, and we have procured ten portable classrooms, actually, from the Brownsburg Community School Corporation, that we will build Epic Village in our north parking lot. So if you can imagine what that's going to look like, hopefully, we're gonna do some decorations to make it look nice. But so we'll have portable classrooms that we're gonna do this training. I think our dates are between June fourth and October first of this year. So again, 2,000 people have to go through this. It's a pretty rigorous training schedule. Classes are offered from eight a.m. to eight p.m. Trying to be very efficient with our time, so naturally, the question came about logistics. You know, the nearest bathroom to our north parking lot is actually behind our ER, which is a little bit of a walk. And so we collectively put our heads together and thought about and reached out to town staff and said, hey, I know you have this wonderful portable restroom setup. We've seen it used at several of the park events and other items. Would you be willing to let us borrow it, if you will? So what we're specifically asking for is for the time duration between June fourth and October first, that we would use that unit. It would be located in our Danville campus, north parking lot. H R H facility staff would be trained by your folks for maintenance. We will be responsible for maintenance, supplies, cleaning it during that entire period. The other items, and I know I've reached out to a couple of folks, I believe, May nineteenth, twentieth, June sixteenth, July twenty-first, August eighteenth, September fifteenth, and November twenty-third. I know it's booked for events, so it would be the hospital's responsibility to get that down to the location of where those events are taking place. And then last but not least, I mean, if an event comes up that the portables are needed for, again, of course, just it's a phone call away. You guys would be gracious enough to let us borrow it. We would certainly get it down to you as quickly as possible. So last but not least, if this is something you're willing to do, what I'd recommend we do is just have a rental agreement put in place between the hospital and the town with adequate liability coverage, kind of stipulating responsibilities and, you know, all the legal fun stuff. So that's it, my request. Can I borrow your bathroom?
Ray, your thoughts?
Absolutely. And so what we would obviously commit to is working with you and understanding how that has to work, particularly the flushing cycle.
Matt, would you have somebody on your staff that could maintain that or at least be trained by our people?
Yes. Yeah. We've identified actually two staff members who that would be part of their responsibility during that timeframe.
Ray, is that something that you, your guys could do, is train their staff? Lead Dr. Gross. Any questions, Matt? Any thoughts from the council?
I think the hospital does so much for the town and the school that I don't have a problem with it at all.
Thank you.
And you're gonna love Epic. It's amazing. I've worked with it for years.
Great. Thank you. We're excited about it. It is something we've been wanting to do for better part of a decade, so we're excited to get an opportunity to do it the way, finally get it implemented, so.
Big city people.
Yeah.
I agree. I think at least we can do for the hospital.
Thank you.
I think it's an epic job.
Will, any concerns from the park? Pickleball could get so big that you're gonna need, you know, a second set.
That is getting very popular. I have heard that, yeah.
Ray, you're okay with this?
Just have your legal staff get something to us.
We'll make sure that your team coordinates with them as far as that and pumping it out and all that other good stuff. I don't believe I'm saying that on video either.
It's a new highlight.
Laura, you're okay? Gary, you're okay? Okay.
I'd make a motion that we enter into a rental agreement with the hospital for the use of our portable restrooms, most likely to be from June through October. Details to be arranged between the hospital and staff.
Hey, I've got a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? I think this is a good idea, and I'm sure we'll be able to work anything out that pops up, unintended. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Have your toilets.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Vulture consultation.
It's the vultures.
All right. Yes, this is epic. Okay. Will and Gary, talk to.
Back again. Okay, so after our last meeting, Gary and I met with Waste Management a couple of times, and then they kind of led us to this Simon Davies, who actually did some work on birds for Waste Management. He's also worked with the airport as well. So when we all worked together, we discussed that, so because it's a migratory bird, you have to have a permit to be able to access the bird. So he has a permit for three birds, but he's also working with Waste Management, so we were thinking about, we would get the permits, he could secure the birds, and then we'd do like a bird exchange, and then he would help us put up the effigies to be more of a passive way to move the birds, and he would help us with that process. And then he wrote up the estimate here, the C H A estimate. That's kind of where we are. We also talked about, if you've noticed, they kind of hang out on that tree, catty corner from CBS, which is not a pleasant sight. I'm in talks with the HOA of Stratford to see if they would let us come in and remove that tree. I got a quote from Roy for complete removal and everything, cleaning up for $2,300. So I guess what we're kind of requesting is, you know, would you like us to move forward? We thought host discretionary fund as a fund that we would use, and really, just your blessing, if you want us to move forward or where you want us to go.
Also, the council. What do you want to spend seven grand plus another 2,300 to possibly chase away buzzards? Or keep them?
I think this is a problem for a few people, so.
Did I hear you? Did I hear you spoke to the dump?
Yes. Yeah, they were a part of these meetings. They're gonna help us because they believe that when they helped their problem, they may have created our problem. So our thoughts were the airport authority, Waste Management, and us are all gonna do plans together so that we can kind of put them in one area, and they have, they're in the northwest, north, southeast tree line? Tree line right now is kind of like their spot, so they're not gonna push them from that spot, because if they push them, they're worried that they'll come back over to us, so we're gonna try to keep them in that spot. And I think it's worked a little bit over in the Park Ridge-Stratford area when we removed a lot of those dead trees. That helped a lot, but they're still there. I have neighbors sending me emails, hey, what are you doing? When are you gonna, you know, enact the plan? What is the plan? It's like, I don't know yet. So that's, we went through probably five meetings to get to this point from the last point. It's really up to you guys.
So originally, it was 26,000.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've got it way down now.
Yeah. And we know this isn't, this guy's an expert. He did it for Waste Management, so we kind of know if they're getting behind him, I mean, I think that's a little bit more than some going out with somebody we don't really know 100%.
I feel a lot of people in the community would like to see them controlled.
Has the county done anything with, when they pick up a carcass and they take it to their garage, are they burying them or are they just dumping them in a pile?
We had looked at that, but we never really got any response. Yeah. Because we had that same thought as well, because where they were first hanging out.
That's a food, that is a food source for them.
Yes.
Marcia likes the idea. Anybody else?
I'm okay.
Sounds like it's something that needs to be done.
All right. Make a motion.
I move that we contract with C H A Consulting, ask one, and number two, for a total of $7,000, and then remove the tree. Do you want that in the same?
Yeah.
Remove the tree at the entrance to Stratford Ridge for an additional $2,300.
And I'm negotiating with them right now. They're trying to find out, what am I talking about? Kind of narrowing it on that tree, so as long as they're okay with it.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
Second. Other discussion. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four-one. Good luck.
Want me to stay up here and just give my report?
Well, where do we have your?
I'm towards the bottom.
Turn the bottom.
I'll come back.
Any other, wait, wait, wait. Any other department have a problem with us going out of order since Will's here? None? Good. Will, go ahead.
All right. Jumping into mine, I'll be quick. You have your report in front of you. Just a couple highlighted things. We upgraded North Park bathrooms. If you get a chance, stop by there.
I only use the portable.
These are nicer than the portable ones right now. We put a lot of work into that. Staff worked really hard, so kudos to my staff, too. They worked really hard on getting those up to date. Evenings in Ellis, our second event, we had over 125 people show up to the concert, so that was awesome. Working on growing that event. Where we're still working on the amphitheater project, we think we have it narrowed down to two possible amphitheaters. I'm hoping to have drawings back to you, either the first or second meeting of next month, so, and final numbers. And then the last thing, we're opening up the, well, we already opened it up, did a soft opening on Friday, just kind of opened it up to the pickleballers who are jumping, jumping at me pretty hardcore. So we've opened up the pickleball courts, multi-use courts, and Tuesday, we'll be doing a grand opening. We're gonna be giving away some pickleball sets. We're gonna do a little name, we're calling it the Rosemary Hilton Courts. We're having the family come out. Hopefully, you guys can come for some pictures and stuff. It's gonna be real short and sweet. It'll be six o'clock tomorrow. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email or anything, too. But it'll be real short and sweet, just something for the family, and also to honor everybody who's put some time into that project, because it's been a long project, but awesome. I mean, we've already had groups of 30, 40 there every day playing, more use than that the courts have had in, I would say, 10 years.
Is it a first come, first served basis, or do?
Yeah, we have, we have some set times where they can come and congregate together, but then it's open any other time, and then we also have the option to rent a court for $10 for an hour. So you can have some dedicated time if you wanted to. Plus, we're hoping that this will bring in some tournaments and maybe even have birthday parties where you rent the train station and you rent out the whole court, too, so.
They're beautifully done.
Thank you. We went kind of risky with the color, but we wanted to go with the Danville color, so.
I see that. My favorite bed and breakfast was in Danville, as copper gutters, white copper.
So that's what's on there currently, and so we, we looked at what the house is, and we want to keep with the nostalgia. So we're gonna hold off on, on the roof. The roof's not an immediate need, but we want to upgrade the roof probably next year. So we're gonna do the gutters this year, and then next year, we're gonna do the roof.
Think that the leaves care if they land on plastic or?
Well, we have those two.
Does copper last longer than?
Yeah, copper, copper is awesome. Plus, the two catchers on the front, they're kind of like a rarity, so we can't really hook other metals to that.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, but we're also upgrading the six-inch, too, so, and putting caps, screened caps on the top of the gutters so that we won't have leaves in there, and hopefully, we want to clean it 600 million times in the winter. So it should look really nice, too, and then once it patina's a little bit after about six to eight months, it's gonna, it's gonna be primo.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Water.
Well, the month mate's here, and we've, if you heard, we've had some numerous water leaks. Had the big one one night at the Hendrix County Hospital, so that was from seven in the evening to about three in the morning, the time we got it all taken care of. But fortunately, the day before, we ordered a new trench box, and we put it together that evening or that afternoon and got to break it in that, that night. So, but I'd like to thank Ray and his crew for helping us out, because that was a pretty big job that we had, and it took everybody to kind of make things happen, plus dealing with the hospital and all their crew, making sure that they had probably plenty of water and they were, the only thing that we, the issue was, they had, they did not have fire service on that one side of the building, but they have a 12-hour window before they have to have the fire department come in and pressurize that. But since then, they found that they internally in their building, they can tie their two lines together inside, and if any occurrence like that happens again, they'll still have proper pressure for fire protection and all that. But we kind of discovered, we had a couple leaks this weekend. We're, I think we found a possible cause of that. The, got a pump at the water plant, one of the check valves, I think is broke, and when the pump shuts off, it slam shut, so we've taken it out of service, and then it's gonna get repaired next week. We're gonna put a new check valve and some stuff, do some work like that, and hopefully, that'll control some of, some of the water hammer from the actual water plant and do it like that. Next, next week, either this week or next week, we'll be having the Consumer Confidence Reports come out in the mail to everybody that has a billing address, and then I believe Betty's gonna have it in the paper this week. We have to advertise in the paper. And then I think Julie, she's got on the website, this is mandated by I D M and EPA. We have to do this on a yearly basis. It's all the results from last year from all of our testing, and everything's always a year behind for that, but we're required to do that. And then pumpage is up normal, it's been pretty dry for May, and we're averaging 1.1 million, about another 250,000 above, normal pumpage without the water leaks, before any water leaks. So hopefully, we get some rains, some significant rains to curtail, either of the water bills, that usually does it, but when they get that out, people, that's not a sprinkler. But other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, planning. Laura.
Just very quickly, since the last report in April, I attended the Indiana Municipal's Managers Association Conference in Lawrenceburg for three days at the end of April. April 27th, as you know, was the Arbor Day that was proclaimed for Danville, and North and South Elementaries both planted trees on that day, and they did a great job with that. The Tree Advisory Committee has met since then, and they're actually working on exploring the idea of a citizens' tree planting program, so just looking at some potential that's occurring in other communities, possibly looking at one for Danville. Plant Commission met in a special meeting on May 9th to review and approve the site plan for Woodland Terrace, the assisted living facility on East Main Street, and that was done. R D C, the Redevelopment Commission, met on May 10th and brainstormed some ideas for funding as well as for some potential projects. They're starting to meet every month, and so next month, I've already got a couple of speakers lined up to come in and educate and provide more information for that group. Site plan for the First Baptist Church of Avon that has acquired the 20 acres immediately west of Four Oaks. They've begun the site plan review process, so they're looking at developing that. They've actually acquired the property probably 10 years ago, so they're just now starting to look at turning some dirt. So that'll be before the Plant Commission, but probably not until July. Likewise, tractor supply, I think I mentioned that last time. The interest is still high. They've been given the preliminary go-ahead to start working on due diligence with some, we've been talking to engineers and doing some site plan stuff, so I'm very hopeful that that's gonna be a go. It is immediately north of Walmart, west of the post office. There's actually a six-acre lot there, and they're only gonna be using three acres of it. So, so hopeful for that. And then, of course, it's spring, and the nuisance complaints are starting to trickle in, so primarily just overgrown yards, a few vehicles, so. If you have any of those and want to forward them to me, feel free to call, text, email. Be happy to look into it for you. Any questions?
For Laura.
Thank you.
All right. Chief Morgan.
Good evening. Very sorry about having to call you all at wild hours lately, but unfortunately, it's just part of my job. Just a couple of quick things. We've, the hospital has acquired property on Main Street, and they have allowed us to utilize the property. It's 2013 East Main Street. We will be training in it for probably the next three to four months. We'll do evolutions primarily with no fires to begin with, wall breaching, hose advancement, things like that, and then at some point, we will start doing live fires in the building, and I'll certainly let everyone know when that happens. But again, that's 2013 East Main Street. We started this week utilizing the, or last week utilizing the building. June 27th, at the Hendrix County Fairgrounds, there will be a circus coming into town, and the proprietors of the circus reached out to the fire department, and we have jumped on this. They've asked if we'd like to watch the elephants before the show, and so we thought that was a pretty cool event to be asked to do. So on June 20.
Didn't you just have a new recruit?
We did have a new recruit class. This may be a good task for them, so, but, but it was pretty cool that they reached out to us and asked if we'd be interested in watching the elephants prior to the show, so we've agreed to do that. We think that'll be fun, so. I have nothing else. I provided with you a report. If you have any questions on it, I'll be more than happy to answer. Any questions?
Anything for Chief Morgan? Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
All right. Waste water.
Good evening. I signed a capacity letter for the retirement center east of town and submitted a permit modification packet for copper and lead, and that is all I have. Yes, hopefully, it does not rain, contrary to what Jim said.
Need a little bit, just not any overflows. Hey, anything else for Jerry? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Barry, stormwater.
Couple of updates and maybe a couple of new things for the council tonight. The first thing is, is all the projects going on on the north side of town, they're going very well. Really pleased with the product that's going in the ground, just taking a little bit longer than expected, but Ray's been pretty helpful with sidewalks and give me the help that we need if we can't get it done the evening. None of the roads have been stopped or closed overnight. We've tried to keep them open. I know they're rough, but at the end of the day, when it's completed, it's gonna function well, and it's gonna look even better because the sidewalks are getting corrected, the proper ADA ramps are getting put in place, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good thing. And I gave Tom, Mr. Pato, some literature on what we're putting in those structures. They remove 99.9% of the hydrocarbons in our street runoff, so that's a good. So that's a good BMP for water quality before it's released into the, the street, the streams. So, um, it's a good thing. Those will be placed in all the new structures. The old structures, as we replace them, we'll be putting these in as well. And that project's just gone really well with a lot of help from a lot of people. The contractor's done a great job. So, um, the building, we shut down the town hall, the boilers, a couple of weeks ago. So, so we should notice a significant reduction in our gas bill. Luckily, the, uh, weather's not been too bad, but it's been a little bit warm. We have a failure upstairs in one of the air handlers, uh, one of the wall units for the classroom. It got a little bit warm, but, um, we turned up one in the other room until we get the parts to repair that. So that's been the only issue with town hall. Um, building permits, they're kind of steady. Um, but, uh, we have had quite a few out at, uh, again, at the crossing. Um, Four Oaks is fairly slow. There's four in Wexford that are under construction. So it's going pretty good, but it's just steady. It's not real heavy and it's not slow. Yes, sir.
How often will that bag need to be replaced?
The, the bag in there, they recommend once every six months to empty it, clean it. The bag lasts up to a year. So the big, the big thing is, is the, the thing that's gonna matter the most of that is how often we do street sweeping. Um, but the good thing about those bags is it's gonna reduce the use of a vac truck. And it's also gonna dry out the material that's in that bag. So we won't have to haul water, uh, dump water, which has a lot of weight. So those will dry out the material that coming off, that's coming off the road. Much easier to maintain 'cause you just pull the basket out, empty it into a truck, you put it back in. So it's simple.
So if we have a, a big rain, say an inch, hour type rain, and grass clippings, I noticed this in my neighborhood, just kind of clog up those drains. Is that gonna be a problem, that's gonna clog these up?
Actually, actually it will be a, those are, if you look at the new structures that we put in the castings, they have no teeth in them. For one, that way we don't knock them out when we snowplow. Number two is, is it's a, it's a larger opening and it's a misnomer because if you look at that basket, and I've got one in the office over there I can show you, it has overflow protection. So the last two inches of that bag is not sewn all the way up. If you have a large rain event, then you lose a bit of your, a little bit of your, uh, hydrocarbon reduction, but yet it will overflow and not flood the street. So I'm pretty sure that's what you were asking.
Exactly, thank you.
So there is overflow protection, um, but I think all around, it's gonna be a lot easier to maintain. Um, and we are profiling, um, the material that comes off the street. I, I'm working with the landfill, they will profile that material. They just want to know what's in it. And then we will take that to the dump in a dry form. We'll take all the calculations of the weight, then we submit that to IDIM and they like those kind of numbers. Uh, one, we're removing stuff that goes into the creek and all the sediment, the fine sediment, trash debris is gonna be captured and taken to the landfill at the proper place. So that, those are, those are good things to do in IDIM's eyes. They're good things to do, period, but IDIM really likes the numbers. So that, it, it's a really good thing, they're very expensive, but as a package with the, the structure, it's actually cheaper than doing concrete structures. Now it's just a matter of seeing how they last over 10 to 20-year period.
Fishers uses this already for a couple of years?
Every single structure in that town has one of these.
Do you know of any other towns outside of this area?
Nope. Flex, these are called flex storms, they're made by ADS. ADS has been in pipe production for a very long time. They're just kind of moving into stormwater quality. Um, they have construction bags and then they have the bags which you're looking at for use, uh, for municipalities, any kind of storm catch basin.
Are you talking to the company or a rep?
Well, that's funny you ask that question. I've been trying to get ADS to sell directly to us, um, but they can't because they have contract with EJP. Um, but EJP has really stepped up and given us really good pricing. Plus we work with them all the time. If I need something, they're out there that day. So you do pay for a service, but it's a good service. So, uh, the pricing is, it is, it's, it's, it's more expensive for the parts that go in it, but we are using ductile castings, they're not as brittle. They're a little bit more flexible, they stay black longer, they don't, they don't look bad. Um, it's all ASTM certified, you know, standards, it meets all those criteria. And every single catch basin is stamped drains to a waterway so that people know that they shouldn't be pouring stuff down that drain 'cause it ends up in our streams.
How many would we need?
Well, there's 26 new structures going in. So I ordered 26 with those structures. Um, and then as we replace them, we will be putting those in. 'Cause some of our catch basins that we have now are more for yard drains. Um, they're flat grates, they're not made, um, for particular curbs or, or streets. Um, but that's what we, you know, that's what they use. And as we change them out, then we'll replace them. Right now, it's a good thing because, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but, um, with this particular catch basin, i- if you have a concrete one, you have to order it, it takes two weeks, they gotta punch the holes, bore the holes. With this product, you bring it in, you can bore your own holes, they give you templates. You cut your own holes right on site. And if you have a pipe that you don't know about, it can be easily tied into that catch basin if we find out that in fact it is a storm drain. You know, if it's sanitary, then Jerry gets involved. Um, so it, it's just a-
These are really good products.
Products and hopefully they, they last. Longevity is the only question I have right now about them. As far as installation and what they're doing, they work perfect.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, Public Works.
We'll try to keep mine a little short. Uh, since the last time I was here, we've done some mowing, uh, on right-ofways, uh, town properties. We've done some paving on 150 East. Um, we put out about seven loads of blacktop out there to fill the potholes from 200 South In to 75 South. We have assisted with the preparation of the flowers going, uh, the flower pots being moved over and helping Laura get the flowers and getting those put out. Um, we have assisted Jimmy on four water leaks. And we have helped Barry pour concrete sidewalks, trying to help speed that process up. And last, we assisted on Mayberry. And I think we had a great turnout. It was a great event and some of the guys worked a little overtime. Any questions?
Questions?
You did more than assists Mayberry, couldn't have gone on without you. You guys did a great job.
Thank you. Uh, Hendricks County's in for a treat.
Just work with them, educate them. Appreciate you helping out.
Uh, one last thing. The square is still in progress for start date June 1st.
Thank you. If any.
First want to give you an update on, uh, the applicant that was given a conditional offer of employment. He has successfully went through all of his perf, uh, requirements and he will report to the, uh, Indiana Law Enforcement Academy in Plainfield on June the 18th to begin his, uh, police academy training. That's a 16-week course. And, uh, prior to that, on June the 11th, I believe it is, he goes for his, uh, physical, uh, training, physical test, uh, as in for an entrance exam into the academy. Also in the Police Commission meeting, just prior to this meeting, I recognized some officers, uh, that I'll just list here. Life awards were given to Sergeant Chase Wilson, Officer Anthony Southern, Officer Josh Gugger, uh, reflecting back to a, a residential fire back on February the 23rd. Also, I recognized six officers for their performance in 2017. This is a couple of months later than I anticipated presenting these awards. I had a, a sponsor that was gonna, uh, have some gift cards, uh, for these, to go along with, uh, their certificate awards. And the subject ended up going to a different place of employment and out went our, uh, our awards as well. I spoke with Marcy Anderson, the, uh, Danville Walmart store manager, and she was very eager to assist us. She gave me four $50 gift cards and two $25 gift cards. And the awards that I presented, uh, for 2017, Nate Lean had the most criminal arrest. Sergeant Everling had the highest concentrator traffic patrol. Part-time officer of the year award went to Ed Jordan. Support officer of the year, Matt Oliphant. And enforcement officer of the year was very, very close and it was awarded to Sergeant Jeffrey Slayback and Officer, uh, Josh Gager. Also catch you up on, we, uh, I've assigned Assistant Chief Hilton did two background investigations for applicants as well as Detective Allison did one. It's been recommended, uh, by those two that I, uh, interview two of the three, uh, potential applicants to fill that one little spot we have left. Tomorrow, uh, morning, I have a 30-minute phone call with each one of them, just giving them an opportunity to tell me about themselves, ask me any questions that they may have prior to a, a scheduled, uh, face-to-face interview. We did the same thing with the other applicants, uh, the same process. Back on the stats, you can see the guys had, had a good month. We ended up with 10 more total arrests than, than what we had the month before. We had eight OWI arrests, which is two less than we had in the, in the prior month. But the month of March was an exceptional month. But even with the eight OWI arrests, that's about 3.5, uh, above the average for 2017. I also presented to the police commissioners, uh, in, in the meeting, uh, this evening on the hiring, uh, of a part-time police officer. Uh, that is in front of you in that packet. Uh, that's the same gentleman that I had hired as the parking enforcement officer. You can see in, in the information I gave you, he is a, is certified by the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. Uh, served 15-plus years with Gary Police Department. He has served another police department, uh, out, out of state as well as a couple of railroad, uh, police departments and is currently a full-time police officer with IU Health up in Fishers. Uh, the plan is, he had, cannot work, he has to work less than 30 hours a week to be considered part-time. I've spoken, uh, at, at length with, uh, Clerk Treasurer Piercy as, as well as Brenda. Uh, so, you know, he'll, he'll be working less than that. With the two, uh, positions combined, his primary responsibilities will be with parking enforcement, but we could use him at times, uh, on the, uh, in, enforcement side as well. Uh, my, my plan is that he will be in a uniform, full police uniform, even while he's doing the parking enforcement. Therefore, if we have any kind of emergency or if he's needed, he'll go from one-time clock or one-time card to another, uh, due to his responsibilities. But we will have another person on the street as a, an officer that can respond. Uh, it's gonna save us money in uniforms. We don't have to buy uniforms for, for both positions as well as give us that, uh, visibility on the street with, with another police officer. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anything from the public tonight?
Mick, you have something to say, I think.
Oh, yes, I do.
All right, your name and what do you do?
I was a witness to a couple of weekends, three weekends ago. Person, baseball cap, middle of the sun, eating flowers, all spreading, slaving. It was a wonderful thing. I honked at it, she was playing Santa Claus, a particular one, didn't follow it even. And I, I liked that, thank Laura Harder who, all that. She was, she was working pretty well.
I can verify this, I, she drove past my house many times. Sometimes she honked, most of the time she was just laser set on. Every once in a while, but a lot of times you were just, uh, dedicated to that job. Town planter.
Thanks, Mick.
Beautiful thing. All right, once around the horn, Gary?
We're in the midst of burning budgets. It's kind of early, we know. That's why we labeled this, uh, this task as budget prep time. Uh, we'll look towards finalization in, in late August. But, uh, right now, we're looking at scheduling a meeting with the council. We looked at June 4th. I know a couple of you said that that's a bad time for you. Uh, but we're looking at June 25th. It's the fourth Monday. Uh, we're looking, as we said, we're in budget prep time. So it's not a finalized budget that requires your action, uh, but we do need to start reviewing what's being submitted. For June 25th and we're kind of open to the time. I'll let you all, I mean, what, first of all, if it's 25th is good.
25th work for everybody?
Works for me.
There are time.
Uh, how long will this meeting last?
I would venture to say anywhere from hour and a half to hour 45 minutes.
Seven? Like we normally meet or does that?
Later the better, later the better for me. I'm good with anything. Good with anything, six o'clock on. I'm just trying to keep it.
That was Gary.
Kind of, since we're used to meeting at seven anyway. The seven work? Seven? All right, seven.
Oh, I have, sir.
Okay, Laura, anything else? Jenny?
Yes, I attended, um, Julie and I attended the AIM budget workshop last Wednesday. And AIM did a presentation that they are putting together a council listserv for all council members. And so I have a form I can pass around. It's an affiliate group that, um, will be only for council members. So if you guys would like to be a part of it, you just sign up and get you guys entered in. That's all I have, thank you.
Tom?
Uh, one thing I might recommend that you look into when you're working on the budget. Um, I know we've all talked quite some time about the fact that the council in Danville is way below our peers in the rest of the county for income, stipend, whatever you want to call it. Figure I'm in a perfect position to make that recommendation with all but shy to do that. So I would recommend that in the process, you, I know that AIM does some comparisons and you can look at that. Uh, but I would look at the possibility of including an increase for the council. They haven't had an increase since the, or I've been on the council. Be my recommendation.
Yeah, it was great to see our little town, our square, come alive this weekend with Mayberry in the Midwest. There were, first of all, Friday night, they set a record, over 300 people were at the meet and greet, uh, which is huge. I was there and what was, uh, nice and different about it is didn't know a lot of people. There were so many out of town people that decided to come, uh, to Danville for the weekend and come to the meet and greet. And then the square was packed. Uh, Friday night Levi Riggs had anywhere from 400 to 500 people. It was just wonderful to see the square be vibrant, all the shops being, you know, people being in and out of the shops, the restaurants, uh, being full. Um, I want to thank, uh, Krista Miller, especially from the Downtown Partnership, for all she did for the Mayberry in the Midwest, Brad and Christine Born. And then like I said before, if it wasn't for Ray and, uh, his guys, uh, the festival couldn't go on. So everybody worked hand in hand and it was a huge success.
And I have nothing for this evening. Claim docket.
Moved to proof.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Claim docket.
In the middle of a motion.
What are we doing here? What's the problem?
No, it's okay.
Motion, we have a- A motion for the claim docket, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claim docket's approved. Good night, enjoy a wonderful evening in Danville.